Needed numbers.
They had to pay what they should.
Okay, at this time, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clark, you take your call.
Mr. Braun, Mr. Combs.
Here.
Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Rickle.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Seven council members present and one absent.
Thank you very much. And at this time Pastor Williamson is here to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for a break from the intense heat and humidity. These last couple of days have really relieved us and especially has it helped those that have to work outdoors. I think about the folks on the 10th Street infrastructure and those that are doing work all over our city in this heat. I'm grateful, Lord, for a break for them. Also, we've got a nice rain. That's helped our farmers and gardens and yards and everything about us is refreshed and lifted when you sent that rain from heaven and we're grateful. I want to especially pray, Lord, for this community in the next two weeks. During the duration of this week, Lord, the street fair event will be held and I'm praying, Lord, for the public that will attend it. I ask you, Lord, for safety to be kept first and that you'll protect our police officers and firefighters and first responders that will work it and keep the public safe. The same prayer will follow the next week when we go into a long 4th of July weekend. Again, Lord, help us to be reasonable in our thoughts and actions and keep our community, our homes, our families safe. And may we be blessed as we share and celebrate together. I'm thankful for those who serve this city, from the mayor and administrators, council persons, committee servants, and everyone who is valuable to the work and progress of our community. I thank you, Lord, for those on the streets every day to keep us safe, to keep us moving forward, keep our homes cool during this heat, and just bless us as we work and serve together. I lift up those within our city family who still need your touch daily with physical afflictions and trials. I ask you to be the great God that you are to help them day by day in their need and in their hours. We pray for this session tonight and we ask you, dear God, to bless everything that's discussed, any decisions that are made that first they are pleasing to you, Lord. We thank you for gathering us and blessing us now. We pray for our nation and those who keep us free. In light of all of this and these, we honor you and pray it together and agree upon it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty, at this time we do allow comments from visitors. If you wish to speak to the council, just step to the podium and state your name and address and leave your comments to five minutes or less. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Tonight we do have several items that council members may choose to remove. First up, the council meeting minutes of May 25th, 2021, the council meeting minutes of June 8th, the DOA report of May, the reappointment of Robert Cantle to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term, the reappointment of Nancy Lewis to the Historic Preservation for a three-year term, reappointment to Human Rights for a three-year term of Luwanda Jackson and Tom Platt, the appointment, reappointment of Shane Kleins to the Park Board for a three-year term, and the reappointment of Charles Williams to the Public Utility Board for a four-year term. So we have all those items for consent agenda and just as a side note, I do have a couple of openings to fill on the parks board and at least one on the Historic Preservation. So if anybody knows of anyone that would be good in those fields, just get ahold of me sometime, shoot me a text or an email, whatever, even the public too. Appreciate everybody that does help on those commissions and boards. So that is our consent agenda tonight and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we pull out the Director Administration Report and discuss it separately, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just the usual reminder that Mr. Stone normally gives, if you are in fact related to someone on the appointment list, please be sure to recuse yourself. And if you were getting ready to say that, Mr. Stone, I apologize for stealing the reminder.
Nope, I already said that once in recent months, so I was good. No, I was just going to give a commendation, and this isn't sliding anybody else on the list, but Nancy Lewis and her commitment to this community and the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historic Society and all those things that she has done, and then as well as Shane Kleins, this is probably at least his, I believe, I know it's at least his third three-year term, if not his fourth three-year term on the Park Board. So just public shout out to those two members of these volunteer committees and commissions that serve our community.
Very good, absolutely. Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you said you're looking for someone for Park Board or Historic Preservation? Okay, just want to make sure I got that correctly. Thank you.
If I have any others, I'll let, I'll send an email out. But yeah, I'll have it in the next day or something. Alrighty. I do have a motion and a second. Any discuss, any more discussion here and then I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed no. Alrighty. So the DOA report is on the floor now. Councilman Simmons?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of questions. And for Tanglewell, not even a question, it says, congratulations again for the management of the golf course. They've had another outstanding month. So things must be working out pretty well. There is a question I saw in the proposed budget, capital budget for next year, overlaying the cart pads. Is there any thought to kind of patch some of the holes that are in the cart pads this year?
I talked to Kyle and he's been trying to get a load of mix and do a little patching before the end of the month.
That would be great.
End of the month is getting closer.
Congratulations Kyle, thank you. Some of that background money that we got.
Yeah, truck, truckload or two would go a long way, that hot mix out there, I think. We'd appreciate that. I know the golfers would and the carts would as well.
Another question is out on page 10. There's some information about a DNR permit and about proposed ordinance changes. Can you enlighten us on some of that or?
Stormwater permit now.
Side check there, DNR permit and stormwater. So, yes, our, at the, at the end of September, our current stormwater management plan for the city will expire. So we have to renew our stormwater permit. So that's what, that's what that's all about. And so every five years, DNR renews their permit and has a couple different requirements in it and a couple different things that we've got to do, so.
Big deal, little deal?
Not a, not a big deal, no.
Okay, so the ordinances are just corrected?
Well, the ordinances will bring, what, what it'll do is make us compliant with the new permit as it, as it sees fit. So there'll, there'll be some changes in there. I don't see them as, as huge changes. Probably the biggest one that I can think of right now that may be up for debate, it's not a, I've got to look into it yet, but there's a, there's a buyout in our stormwater permit. So what that is, is if you build a, a new business someplace and it's on an open field, now you're putting a bunch of hard surface on it. We, there is a clause in our current stormwater, stormwater codes that allows, okay, in lieu of, of us taking care of the stormwater on site, we pay that, they could pay the city a certain amount of dollars to do a kind of a regional stormwater improvement or do an improvement somewhere else in the city. So that may, that may be up for, that may be axed, but we'll see.
Okay, thank you. That was really all I had.
Okay. So Kyle, since you're there. So you had the meeting at 5:30? How'd that go?
No one showed up.
Kind of what I thought would be happening.
No one showed up, so, you know, it went, it went pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else got questions on the DOA report? Appreciate the directors putting all that together for each month. Alrighty, I do still have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
We actually do not have a motion on the floor.
Oh, that's right.
But if we could get one, that would be great.
Yeah.
I make a motion, will you approve the Director Administration Report?
Second.
Alright, any other questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no. Alrighty. Next up, we have a presentation of our May financials. This whole slag.
So are they going to take notes while you're talking?
No, they're going to listen in rapture. Probably the biggest news this month is we are still up 12% on our sales tax. And I was pleasantly surprised. I thought that the reduction in that number would be much quicker. We were at 13 and a half percent last month, so.
That's a shout out for citizens.
Yeah, fingers crossed. May last year was obviously not very good either, but, but I think it'll pick up some. Hopefully we'll stay ahead. Double digits would be great, but I don't know that we can look for that to the end of the year. I've made notes of anything that I thought would be of interest on the financials. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Did we ever figure out about the golf course where that chunk of money, was it equipment? I believe it was last month's report?
It was leased equipment for the course, not for, for groundskeeping equipment, I believe.
Okay.
And chemicals.
And chemicals.
Okay.
Which was the big one that I always catch, so, yeah. But it was the groundskeeping equipment.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Any other questions for Kathy?
No reception.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no. Alright, thank you. We do have next up unfinished business. We're going to hear update on the smart grid, I guess. Is there anything new to report on that?
Well, hopefully with the rec center work winding down, the, the two IT guys can get back on smart grid. I know Mr. Miller and Mr. Dilly's been out there quite a bit. We have walked two more routes, getting ready to walk the third route and hopefully they can get back on their sorting routine, especially Mr. Miller. And I do believe Kathy did one download on the next route that we haven't fixed yet. I think she told me she got everything at 10% roughly. So that one shouldn't be too hard to fix, once we get the IT guys back.
So in total, the whole smart grid system, how much have you verified?
One route.
50%?
No, of, of everything, it's all deployed and Kathy knows the route numbers better than I do and they're different sizes. So I would ask her to answer that question for you because we got some real small routes that we read two or three routes in one day and then we got some that take a day plus to read.
Route 27 has about 340 meters. We did successfully pull that IT descent. I want your personnel out to provide another meter and help build it, okay?
Okay.
We just pulled Route 36, which I think has closer to 600 meters, a little low. We came in with about a 90% with the land. So we wanted to go out and look at it here. I have sent them around 45 and I believe that they remember IT because, um, sorry to do that and assign a person out to check.
And is this something that 90% is acceptable, what we should expect, you think, or?
We would like 95%.
Is that what you go, yeah, 95?
So back to my original question, not talking routes, I'm talking the city. How much of the city smart grid has been, is working or has been verified or, I mean, are we at 50% or?
See, all, the, the entire city, all the, all the water meters are not converted.
Okay.
And all the gas meters are not converted.
Okay.
So we don't even have those out there as an option yet. We, we had in the budget for a couple of years to increase that by X number of meters a year. But then I put a stop to that because I had concerns about the overall smart grid. And until we could get the meters that we have deployed, fully functional, going all the way through billing in place, I didn't want to make those additional investments. So once we get, I think you got, how many, how many gas urchs you got out there?
Got about 1,200 gas and about 1,200 water.
Out of three?
4,000.
4,000.
And we got about 50, we got about 5,200 electric.
Electric's fully deployed.
It's total.
Okay.
And working.
Electric's doing pretty good.
Okay.
So, deployed, we got roughly between 85 and 9,000 meters.
So the following question is, of those deployed, where are we at?
Well, what she just told you, she's got 340 and 600 that she's checked and she's 90% on the 600 and she's about, I think, 97% on the 340, 10%.
So that as a snapshot kind of tells you that probably overall that we're at 90-ish percent for the whole city then?
There'd be some routes.
Is that what you're kind of saying?
Yeah, well, we've robbed some parts from other parts of the system to get this other side going too. So some of the collectors we've robbed from another portion. Because we wanted to make sure we could make something work without spending very much money, so. Yeah, about 10% is what we're at right now.
10% fully functioning of the, of what's deployed. Is that what you're saying? Are you saying the opposite number, that we're 90%?
No, no, I'm not saying that. We're 10% checked and verified. I think that's a better way of saying it.
Of the whole city.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
If you just go, if you just go off of what's deployed though.
That's what I'm asking.
The number's going to be larger than that.
It's going to be larger than that, yes.
Probably.
That's what I'm asking.
But we have not, we haven't checked all the data in all of it yet. Remember we had that database problem.
Probably 20, of deployed, we're probably at 25%. Thousand, 4,000?
I guess the next time the smart grid is on the agenda, I guess I'm, I'm interested in that quantified number of, of what we have deployed. Where are we at with fully functioning?
What do you call fully functioning?
What do you call fully functioning? That's, that's, we keep looking.
There's a difference between taking the whole set of meters and saying, we can read 90% of them.
Sure.
Or 95, whatever it is, and saying Route 2, she can bill because we're above 95% on that route.
And see Jeff, to me, I don't care about deployed. I care about how many can we, do we get through meter, through reading, through billing? That's, that's a fully functional meter and route.
Right, but to get there, it has to be deployed.
Right.
So I care about deployed.
Okay.
You're, you're, what'd you say, 4,000 electric meters?
About 5,200, about 5,200 electric meters.
5,200 electric meters have been deployed. And we are, you said 97, 98%?
On one particular route, through billing.
Okay, but I thought on electric, we were, we were fine.
Well, we've been robbing parks from other areas of town to get the areas that we're focusing on operational, which is then knocking them out of, which is drastically reducing them.
My apologies, 5,200 electric meters deployed and you said 1,200 gas?
It's about 1,200 gas, about 1,200 water. And I'll tell you right now, the gas is 99% reads every time. Gas don't fail.
Okay.
Water depends on if it rained the last three days.
So if somebody asked me, is the smart grid working for the gas meters?
Yes.
And the answer is, for the 1,200 we have on the smart grid?
Yes.
Yes.
But the electric meter's got to work to bring the gas reading.
Okay.
And all of those gas meters aren't going all the way through billing.
Okay, so what's, what I'm interested in is what is that percentage?
Well, if you want the dashboard snapshot of the percentage of electric meters, gas meters, water meters reading, without going through billing, just, here's the live ones, here's what's working, yes, we can do that. We can give you that information.
Okay, is that?
It's getting closer.
Getting closer, I mean. I guess I'm interested in that and then I'm interested also in what's getting, what, what's going through billing.
Okay. Well, right now, one route's going through billing.
Okay.
There you go.
My, my understanding is the purpose of the smart grid is so that our personnel can stay in the office and read all of the electric, gas and water meters remotely.
Correct.
100%, that's perfect. So my question was, how many of those or what percentage can we do that? Or what percentage do we have to send somebody out in the field to take the data because they're not working right?
Okay, that'd be the, we can give you the dashboard of the smart grid, which tells you the percentage, how many's out there and how many's reading? And how many is slowly, if you want that also?
Yes, please.
If it forces somebody to go out in the field, it's not working properly. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
From my, from my standpoint, yeah.
That makes sense, except if the whole city was billed at the same time, one big route, then the dashboard would basically be correct.
Yeah.
It's, it's 85% of them's working. But when Kathy tries to load and there's this route, you only get 75%, we're going to read that route.
Yeah.
Because the time she hand loads the handhelds after she downloads the meters, we're wasting time. So even though you got 75% of them working on that route, we're still reading that route.
But if you're up to 90 or 95%, then you go ahead and just.
Correct.
Do it, do it that way and pick and choose the ones that aren't working and read those.
That's correct.
So that's kind of why you're doing it a route at a time.
Right.
To, to really save time.
To save time. We're just trying not to chop the whole forest down the same, at one time, we're.
Okay.
Hey Gerald, got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm probably new more, new to this anyway. What's the goal for completing being every, being on the smart grid? Making sure everybody in Fulton is on that. 10 years from now or?
Eight years previous.
Eight years?
Before now.
Eight years ago.
It's been 10, eight years.
Eight years ago, oh, my.
We've been working on this since 2009, right?
Yes, we have.
That's about when it started.
Well, that's when we applied for the funds anyway.
It was.
I think our goals, it's good to, easy to say our goals have changed over the years.
Yeah.
What would be our goal now? I guess realistically, that's a good, maybe a good question to ask. What is our goal?
I like to know, yes. I like to know when, yeah, when we want to get, make sure we on board, you know. Are we looking at the next five years to get this done and do we need to sink more money into it or? And is it going to work if it's something that we can, it's going to pay off for us?
It works everywhere, most everywhere else but here right now. And I think part of the problem was, we got the grant. Everybody knew it was on the, on the council. The grant was pushed out by the United States government to spur this development on. So instead of getting tried and true technologies, been under 10 years, we got technology that probably wasn't fully vetted yet.
Beta.
Right.
Maybe alphas.
Yeah, okay.
So that was part of the, they gave us a lot of money, but they knew there's going to be problems. Is that a fair way of saying it?
And it has been.
And it has been.
We've worked on, we sure have.
And we've already scaled it back.
We scaled back.
From the original, from the original in TAM, quite a ways.
Even our.
Just to stop the bleeding.
Well, some of the stuff just didn't work at all. If you remember correctly, we started out with programmable thermostats that you could roll back for low shade.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, DO, Department of Energy let us have that because none of them was working anywhere. So before the grant was.
And we were talking about time of use data and, and everything's got to work before you can do that. And we were talking about peak shaving and.
And then if something breaks, it's, whose fault's it going to be?
Right.
That was my big concern.
That was the big concern. So a, a lot of it that was in the original grant, DOE said, don't worry about because not only Fulton, there was other places all over the country that could not make that, those systems work yet. Now, the, the outage system seems to work pretty good. I mean, if you notice, there's a TV downstairs that when there's an outage, Kathy's finance people and there's outage calls start coming in, they can look, they go, yes, there's several out in your neighborhood and, and we're aware of it and we're working on it. That does not get billing and we want billing.
So I know we're, we're, we know where we are, do we know where we're going?
We're going one route at a time. And so far, that seems to be working. But we have been at the rec center for two and a half months.
Yeah, of course.
Well, we do appreciate the update, appreciate the work on all that. I know it's probably not something y'all look forward to. Yep, yes, sir.
That's fine. Uh, Mr., okay, so how many routes are there? 56, okay. So maybe we can get it, what's being asked for, broken down by route, which ones we're really going for and these are the ones that we're not even looking at right now, or something like that. And it could be a range of them, you know, 15 through 32 we're not looking at or whatever. You know, I think that may give us more information.
Well, right now, we're doing the routes that all three services are fully deployed on.
Okay, good. And when you say you've taken parts to make these two or three routes work, so does that mean those routes are not, not fully deployed now, since we've taken?
They're fully deployed. What we took from other spots, if you remember right from our original discussions, 2010.
Oh, yeah.
You've got meters on the homes, then you've got area collectors, neighborhood collectors.
The shark fins.
Those shark fins, yes, sir.
Yeah, exactly.
We took some of the shark fins from some other areas and put in this area to get, so we haven't been to a person's home. The shark fins are actually mounted on the post, so.
Gotcha, okay.
When we get back to those routes, we will have to purchase some shark fins and put them back up.
And if it's not out of order, since you mentioned the park, the rec center, we have the, the wifi and whatnot working there?
I think in most of the building, I was out there this week, trying to get some other spots working.
Alright.
The, the big push was to get it where we could open.
Okay.
And trying to work on the elevator.
And those things are working?
I think the elevator's got to come back for another inspection, if I remember.
It wasn't working this morning.
It wasn't working this morning. I think they got to come back and inspect again.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I wasn't the intended of this conversation. Okay, thank you, I mean, I wasn't the intent of this conversation, but since, since you mentioned it.
That's, that's okay.
It's okay, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else on the smart grid?
Thanks, Darryl.
Alrighty, we'll move on to new business, we have a presentation on acceptance of our twenty-twenty city bolt audit. Exciting topic.
Edge of your seat stuff. It is my pleasure, it is my pleasure to introduce our audit team. Amanda Schultz is a partner with Williams Keeper, and Kristen Brown was our lead auditor this year. Our look in here.
All right, good evening, everyone. Kristen and I will be splitting our presentation this evening, but we are just going to focus on our summary report, which hits the highlights of all of the individual reports that we issued as a result of our audit of the city's financial statements as of and for the calendar year that ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. So the first report is the comprehensive annual financial report. The preparation of this report is a sign of excellence in financial reporting, as it contains substantially more information than that required by GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. In addition to the financial section, which is the only GAAP requirement and the focus of our presentation this evening, the report also includes an introductory section on the first six pages, and a statistical section at the back on pages sixty-eight through eighty-nine, that has a lot of good information in it, um, a lot of trend data for the last ten years, um, so I would certainly draw your attention to that, um, if you ever need something to read before you go to bed at night. Uh, because preparation of this report is a sign of excellence in financial reporting, as I said, the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, awards a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to entities for their reports that are submitted to and reviewed by the GFOA. The city received this award for the twenty-second consecutive year on its twenty-nineteen report, and anticipates it will receive it again on its twenty-twenty report, the one that we're presenting tonight. So as I mentioned earlier, the financial section of the report, which is on pages one through sixty-seven, is the focus of our presentation. The city's comprehensive annual financial report contains the financial statements as of and for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, along with our report on those statements. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on those statements. In our opinion, they are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with GAAP. Again, that's the best opinion that you can get, and it means that the users of the city's financial statements can rely upon them. Moving to the next page of the summary report, the financial statements themselves include two different sets of statements, again this year. The first is the government-wide financial statements, those are on pages ten and eleven, which are full accrual and include all of the city's funds, as well as capital assets, long-term debt, any other liabilities that the city may have are reported in those statements. The fund financial statements are the other set, and those are separated into governmental funds on pages twelve through fifteen, and proprietary funds on pages sixteen through nineteen. On the middle of page two of this summary report, we have a table that summarizes the highlights from the government-wide financial statements, which is again where everything is put together, as of and for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, with comparative information for twenty-nineteen. As of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, total net position for the entire city, um, or the city's equity, was approximately ninety-four million. Of that ninety-four million, the unrestricted portion of that was approximately ten million at the end of twenty-twenty. And for that year that ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, the change in net position was a positive one point three million. There is a section in the audited financial statements called the management's discussion and analysis, that's on pages three through nine, and it discusses the changes in the various categories that are summarized here, um, in quite a bit more detail, so I would check that out as well. Are there any questions about the financial section of this report? With that, I'll turn it over to Kristen to cover our other reports that we issued as a result of the audit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I will be covering the next portion of the summary report, entitled the auditor's communication letter. Um, this letter consists of comments about our audit process and its results, and this letter is required under our professional standards to be communicated to the city council. A few of the highlights from this letter, um, we noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, and there were no changes in accounting policies during the year. There will be a few changes in accounting policies in the coming years, and details of those accounting policies are listed in the full auditor's communication letter. Um, we evaluated estimates affecting the financial statements and found those estimates reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, and all required disclosures are included in the financial statements. We also found that the accounting records were in good order and proposed no significant audit adjustments as a result of our procedures. There were also no uncorrected misstatements this year. Moving on to page three, um, we also had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, as well as no significant, significant difficulties in performing our audit. Any specific questions about that letter? Okay, I'll move on to the management. I'll move on to the management letter. Um, so this letter is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal control, as well as certain other matters, um, that in our opinion, we feel are significant enough to warrant your attention. So although the scope of our engagement was not directed towards an opinion on the adequacy of internal control, um, we do consider internal control in, um, planning our audit procedures. So given that limitation and just the general inherent limitations on internal control, we found no material weaknesses in internal control for the city. We do have one recommendation that is included in the management letter. Um, this is just an opportunity for the city to enhance its internal control related to the municipal garage fund. Specifically, the municipal garage fund does have a deficit in net position of approximately one point three million. Um, since this is an internal service fund, it essentially should break even, so our recommendation is just increasing the amount charged to the other funds, um, in order for that fund to break even. And that's a consistent comment that we've had for several years. That's all I had, do you guys have any questions for me or Amanda? Any questions about the summary report or about our audit in general, anything we can answer for you all?
I have a big question, uh, when, when you have a finding, do you, who do you report that to? If you find something that's out of the norm, who do you report it to?
We would report it in either or both of our auditor's communication or management letters.
Okay.
So.
You'll send it to the mayor, the city administrator?
Yes.
Not to the council?
Oh, it would formally be issued in the letter to council if it rose to the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness in internal control. Anything that's just a best practice type recommendation, we would normally just have a verbal discussion about. Okay, we appreciate.
Nice question, thank you. Good question.
We appreciate that, particularly, did you have a question?
I, I actually just wanted to say I appreciate your enthusiasm about this. I like financial reporting and all of this and audits, but you were very enthusiastic about your presentation, ladies.
You gotta make light of it sometimes, right?
That was your first presentation, like, ever, right?
No. Not even the first presentation of the day, so. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to do the audit, as well as to present the results to you all this evening, we certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And if, if they have any, if they come up with any questions in the near future, they're, they're, they're welcome to, like, send me an email, and we will get that to them and get, get an answer back to you.
Absolutely.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a little, well, a little bit, the only real issue that you identified at all is the municipal garage and how we deal with that.
Correct, yeah, that fund has had a deficit net position, or negative equity, so to speak, for a number of years. We just wanna keep bringing that to everyone's attention and see if a change can be made in the way that other funds pay or reimburse the activities of that fund.
So something, an action we probably need to take to, to review and discuss at a later time. But it's a great, great report, thank you.
Very good.
So just on that same subject, I guess, from my understanding, if let's say we have a solid waste truck that needs to be repaired, it'll go to the garage, they'll repair it, but they won't charge a hundred percent of their effort back to the solid waste department, is that kinda what this says?
Yeah, that's, I mean, in the big picture, what hap, what happens though is the solid, they're, they're working on the solid waste truck.
Mm-hmm.
As, as billable hours, and Dennis and I have talked about this way too many times, about needing to do billable hours, get the billable hours put in there. But then what happens is, somebody from one of the other departments walks in and says, hey, I, I need you to look at my taillight. You know, it's a fifteen-minute job, so they go get some, and all of that, or, or another department needs a part. And they have to do research on the internet to find a, a widget to go on the specific. Well, I just don't think we're really good about billing out that research time, uh, looking, looking online for the widget and getting the widget ordered. And so there's, it's, they're, they're just having a.
Loss.
I don't think they're having a hard time staying busy, I just think they're having a hard time documenting, documenting their billable hours.
Exactly.
And do they, you know, if they're working on the solid waste truck and somebody needs a light taillight, do they just keep the clock running on the solid waste truck? Or do they stop it and then restart when they get back to it, and it's just, it's, but it's, it's a lot of that.
There's a lost time in every job. Is there a way to capture that lost time and just split it up between all departments? That way, it's at least being accounted for, is that a smart thing to try to do?
Look at, look at Dennis smiling.
I don't know, I'm just trying to think of something.
I mean, who do you charge the paperwork on?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could split that up to everybody, maybe, be fair.
I mean, or you gotta, to, to, to get a part, I mean, do I charge Robert that time?
I, I, I think there's always that time at any job, that's just sort of, eh, not really a good way to categorize it.
But, but a lot of times, like, if we took this to a mechanic in town, they would do, they go to their, the books and say, this job costs this many hours and this is, you know, and what it is. And maybe that's what we need to try, something of that nature.
We looked at that, but we have such a vast, uh, we have Dodge and Chevy's.
Right.
J C D loaders, I, I mean, we, to get all of that.
Software.
Yeah, exactly.
Software to do something like that. You know, they have a mechanic that just does that job.
Right. And, and, and we don't have a service manager. Right. We got a, we got a supervisor, but he's not a service manager that's gonna do the diagnostics and do the scheduling and, and do this type of thing. And right now, I think you go to any of the local shops in town, you're probably a hundred and ten bucks an hour, and we're fifty dollars an hour.
I think last month, we got caught up and we had eighteen hours cleaning the shop. What do you do that to?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's overhead, so there's gonna be some of that, but we gotta be able to get closer, I think, so. And, and sometimes we've been known to do, I'm, I'm probably gonna get corrected on this, we've been known to do a hundred dollar oil change in a pickup. Yeah. Well, then I gotta, I got some department heads out there that scream and holler about, I could've gone someplace in town and got done for half of that, or less.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I remember that conversation from before. Every time, and I, I hope, I don't know if we're still doing this, but every time we run a truck through the shop, they do a safety inspection. Yeah. So that, that adds to the, the time and the bill and that type of stuff. Okay, we don't need to take these ladies' time with us. No, that's, that's why they're here.
Yeah, and I was just.
That's the easy stuff, 'cause they're not even having to have to talk.
Yeah, well, I was going to conclude with saying, I know it's easy to get lost in these financial statements, but if you're looking for details on that fund specifically.
Yeah.
There are two statements on pages sixty-one and sixty-two. Sixty-two shows the current year activities, you can see what the current year net loss is, and that's just contributing to the deficit net position that has built up over several years.
Okay.
Well, thank you all, very much.
Yes, thank you, great job as you, as always. Not adopt, just accept.
So I'm just gonna ask for a motion to accept this report.
Move that we accept the audit, uh, for the year twenty-twenty.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Thank you very much. The discrepancy's been noted, and I think it'll be worked on.
Thank you.
Exactly, exactly.
We'll move on to, um, what do we have next here, capital budget.
Capital budget.
Twenty-twenty-two's capital budget.
Um, Robert put this together, I'll probably do, you know, a lot of talking. This, the annual three, this, this capital budget is required by the charter. It's a statement in the charter that the mayor is presenting this document to you. And what this document is, is probably two months ago, Robert started compiling a list, uh, sent out an email to all the department heads saying, what's your wish list, guys, for the next three years, folks, for the next three years? And pretty much everything that was on their wish list is contained in this budget, unedited and all edited, this, this is their wish list. It is to give you some idea on what the various department heads see as going to be some of their long-term capital gain, or request, needs. Every year, I make the statement very similar to, just because it's in here, doesn't mean we're gonna buy it. Doesn't mean it's gonna make it in the, the operational capital budget that we approved in October and November. Okay, if it shows in here for twenty-twenty-two, doesn't mean it's gonna be in the twenty-twenty-two operational capital budget. Conversely of that, just because something is not listed in here, it might make it in the twenty-twenty-two operational capital budget that is approved later on. Some of the needs are gonna be more focused in three or four months of what they, what they really gotta have next year, uh, what will be a little closer. We will not, under any shape or form, have enough money to fund the requested twenty-two capital budget as outlined in this document. It's just not gonna happen. There are gonna be, um, cuts made and, and some other modifications. But this, like, as I said, this is required to give you guys an idea on what the various departments think they're gonna be needing over the next three years. Are there any questions?
And as questions do come up throughout the year, uh, we're available, you know, Bill and his staff are available to answer questions or to.
Cause probably even early as next month, Robert will send out the, the prep pages to the department heads to begin the twenty-two operating budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just because it's easy to spot them, some of these lines that have nothing in them, I, I greatly doubt that there will not be any capital requests come through for those lines, so I'd.
Like if I had.
I'd suggest that, um, I can, no, finance has things in their line items.
Cemetery.
But cemetery has no capital projects planned for our city-owned cemeteries for the next three years. Parks and Rec pools, I'm assuming we will definitely have some capital projects over the next three years. Just because they're easy to spot in this type of report, I just suggest that that have some attention to it.
I was just gonna make a, you know, a thought that, you know, as I'm walking around, I've been talking about that a lot at meetings that.
Okay, one.
If, um, you know, say, I'm walking down a walking trail, and I say, you know, it'd really be nice if this was lit, you know, that would be a capital expenditure, expenditure that we should, as council members, should suggest, just to get it on the list. It may not, may, may not happen, you know, just, or this one needs some, to be reworked or whatever, you know. And, I mean, I don't know what vehicles are needed, obviously, but, you know, we can see things in the city that, that need to be addressed.
Absolutely, and I think maybe this isn't the exact appropriate time to talk about it, but the phone's available on time.
Right, I mean, I'm sending Bill, Bill things all the time. Sometimes after he's in bed.
Yeah, oh, you too?
I don't do that anymore. Appreciate that. Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, anyway.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Do we need to take any action, like acceptance of this?
No, there's, there is no actual requirement.
Awesome.
It's just our first list.
Thank you for the hard work on this.
All right.
It does give us something to work from. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
The, uh, we have our acceptance of our proposed gas rate increase of five cents per unit effective for the late August twenty-twenty-one billing, and a second half, uh, five-cent unit increase effective for April twenty-two billing, as authorized by ordinance one nineteen oh five. Um, that's what's up for discussion. This was sort of the agreed-upon path to rebuild our, rebuild our, uh, gas reserve fund. Um, and I don't know if Darryl would expand on that a little bit, or...
No, you know, we talked about it at the last council meeting. Um, one question I did come up was, has the utility board approved this? And my, my answer is y- yes. They haven't seen this exact proposal, but their recommendation was to replenish the fund over the course of three years. This is not going to get us there in three years, um, but it should get us there, should get us closer there, there in five. So, um, you know, it was, I think for three years, when it was presented to the city council, was not overly, there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm. So maybe this, this five-year plan, um, we did get, we got the money. The money came through, is sitting in our bank. Um...
That's the, the interest-free loan that's...
Right. The interest-free loan money came through, it's sitting in our bank, and our first payment is twenty-twenty-two.
First of year?
So, as you, as you can see, as we, I just wanna talk you through this just a little bit. Um, Darryl was able to go through his two thousand twenty-one operational in capital and find about half of the funds necessary to, for the, for the annual payment. Um, we're proposing that take effect, um, in eight, no. In September?
August.
August. I can't find, I can't, effective with the August billing. Um, one reason we wanna do August is utility, gas utility usage is, is, is smaller, and it will have less of an impact on any of the, any of the residential bills. Um, the next nickel, you know, Darryl can't find half of the money to, to pay that back every year, so the full dime would go into effect with the April twenty-twenty-two billing. We're do, we're choosing, we're choosing April as it has passed the heating season, so it will have limited impact on any of the residential customers, um, this coming winter. It'll just, it'll just be the nickel. And at that point, we see that a ten cent staying online for, in the next four, four and a half years. Now, granted the Panhandle Eastern case issue, if and when it's resolved, we'll, we'll come back to the city council and tell you how that's all gonna play out. But if, you know, if that goes away and that rate is lowered, we would come back and say, "Hey, we don't need to pay this increased rate anymore. Um, we wanna roll, we wanna roll the gas rate back to compensate for not needing that increased rate there any longer."
So, so the, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the question that I was looking at is, I thought we were looking at, not so much the natural gas, but I thought, I heard it, uh, conversation was on, uh, water, because we had, the water rate has not been increased in so many years, that might be something...
That, we, we did, we did have that conversation briefly at another meeting, when we were talking about some of the rates and fees.
Yes.
And that, we'll bring that up at a different time.
This is mostly because of what happened earlier this year, right?
In February.
In February.
When we had the big cold snap that we had to, over the weekend, right?
And, and just for the public viewing audience, we, we did have a meeting about this, and we spent a lot of time talking about this, even though we're not gonna dig deep into it tonight, we've definitely put a lot of work and thought into this, the council has, I say "we," but you guys have. So, thank you for that. Yeah, but yes.
So, just kind of off a general question, we've received the loan from the state.
Yes.
That money is going into the reserves. As we have to pay that back over, what is it, five years?
Yes.
This increase in the gas fund will try to offset that over five years, maybe, to where we're, we're kinda back to a decent reserve in five years. Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
This increase should make the debt service payment on the loan.
And we're not spending that money, except as, as a reserve.
Spending that money.
Right. It's there as a rainy day fund, if you will.
An emergency.
Yeah.
Like we use.
Insurance policy.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
But we could have another cold snap like we did this year. Hopefully not, but could happen again.
Yep. And we always hate to raise rates on our citizens. It's not anything we wanna do.
No.
We, we do have to recognize that we could've been in a lot worse shape had we not had the foresight to, to have that gas fund reserve in place.
That's right.
Um, so, uh, even though we're feeling a little bit of pain now, we could've been feeling a whole lot more pain, uh, that other cities have, so...
Plus the gas purchases we make prior to at lower costs and all that, you know.
That makes a difference.
We headed by peaking power, if you will, and that's what, what got us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, when was the last, uh, height, uh, gas rate hike that we had?
That's a better question for...
That was when we, when we got the lawsuit, when we entered in that lawsuit with Panhandle Eastern, we raised them seven and a half cents back when? Twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half cents.
Twelve and a half cents.
About a year and a half to two years ago? Nineteen.
So if we end up winning that, then we can then address the extra money and drop the rates?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it will, and it could be a double positive. We may get a huge refund, okay? If it is, if it is deemed that their rate increase is excessive, they will have to refund that money. And we'll get a, we will get some money back. Um, and over the last year and a half, that estimate on how much we will get back is varied greatly, varied greatly. Um, so we'll get some money back, and we're not, and we're gonna be paying a reduced rate into the future, so we're not gonna have to generate those funds to make that increased payment. So we'll get, so we'll not only get the refund, which we can either apply to the loan and the note, or apply straight to the reserves and maybe pay it off quicker, and we won't have to, we can roll that rate back to something that's appropriate for the settled-up on lawsuit rate.
Or it could be somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere in the middle. I mean, that, that, the proposed future rate has gone from, right now, we're paying three times more than normal, is that about the book? Three and a half times more than normal is what we're being charged right now, to, um, when, when they first made some of the first estimates, they actually said that we might see a reduction. And that's off the table. That's no longer, 'cause there've been, there's been other, um, cases settled by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that have said, "Well, that's not gonna happen." So that, now they think they're looking at some, something smaller. But there, but we still anticipate some increase, just not three and a half times.
But it's important to know that we have to move forward, assuming that we're not gonna win that lawsuit, and we're not gonna see any of that money.
Right.
I mean, if we do, great, but if we don't, we have to kind of assume we're not going to.
And when it first started, they, they said it was gonna be, um, six, eight months. And then I was like, "Oh, you're gonna know by twenty-twenty-one?" And now they're saying mid-twenty-twenty-two, second quarter, 'cause right now, they're, I think the, the, the whole rate case has been heard, and now both sides are given, like, three or four months to see if they're, wanna challenge any testimony that the other side gave.
Bill, I'm, that's my main concern, is, uh, low-income people, they have a struggle already depending, especially during the wintertime, uh, or during the fall and winter, uh, paying their utility bills, especially the gas. And, and I'm just looking, why are we using the gas hike as far as jumping up a nickel when we can maybe possibly use the water since it's not, uh, since we have...
We have separated funds. We want each of the funds to carry themselves, and this is, this, the extra revenue generated by the nickel will go to the gas fund to help...
Yeah, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying, are we locked into just separated funds? Why can't we just...
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and that's, that's my question, if we, are we just locked into it? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do not recommend a proposed gas rate hike. And I must say, I am a gas customer, so I'm not speaking for myself, but I disagree with the strategy that was recommended by the, the utility board to, to can, to refund the reserve within three years, and for any anticipation that we will be able to completely restore the loan amount within the next five years. And it's based on the fact that what we saw in February was once in the entire history of the gas rates. If I understood the information that was shared with us at the time, the most that gas had ever cost any municipality was like sixteen cents a unit, and it jumped to three dollars. So in, in the entire history, I think we pay, what, four, do I have my numbers right? Pay, like, somewhere between three and four cents a unit now, and it, the most it had ever seen was sixteen cents? And we saw in that one period of time it go up to three dollars? I, I don't believe this is going to be repeated. We have a loan that is going to allow us to have funds in the bank in case it is repeated, 'cause you, you know, once something happens, and it's never once in a lifetime again, becomes a norm. But I think this municipality trying to recover three-point-two million in three to five years is unrealistic, based on raising natural gas prices, again, ten cents over the next year, as well as anything else. I do not recommend this ordinance. I do not recommend a gas hike for this to match these funds. We need to find a, a longer strategy.
And thank you for your comments, Councilman Stone. And just to be clear, this was recommended by the, uh, city council after a meeting about it, that we took the, the public utilities meeting, or their recommendations into account, but that night, we all were met, and you weren't able to be here, of course, and you...
And then I disagreed the next time that we discussed it again, so...
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I'm just clarifying that it wasn't something that the board came up with. This was from...
But it was based on the board's initial recommendation, and then it was based on further conversations that I in person was not able to be a part of, but I wanna make sure that it's, I believe our strategy to try and replenish three-point-two million into a reserve is unrealistic, and especially if we're gonna use a gas hike to do it.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
We, uh, if we do nothing, we do not raise gas prices. Right now, that fund breaks even, essentially. We've gotten a loan from the state that covers, that we've put into the cash reserves, that covers the expenditure we had in February. The problem with that is, we have to return it.
Yes.
And we have, and by, so within five years, we're gonna be at exactly the same point with our cash reserves as we are right now. So by not raising rates a little bit right now, in five years, we're gonna be in exactly the same point with no possibility of getting a loan.
I guess the, the part that I'm... We were able to build up a five-million-dollar reserve over a ten-year period.
And we killed it in a year.
We killed part of it, three-point-two of it.
Well...
In ten days. Yes, we did. But we, but so, I'm assuming that we can still build up, over the next ten years, we can build up five million. What I'm disagreeing with is a strategy where we need to cut our spending, raise our rates, in order to replenish what took us ten years to get to, to replenish it in three or five years. Yes, in five years, after we pay off this loan, we're not gonna be at five million dollars. We might be at three million, because of what we already have in there, the one-point-eight that we have in now, plus what we're able to put into it over the next few years.
But I'm saying the cash, the money that the gas fund brings in is a wash. We don't have extra money coming in anymore for the gas fund. Is that a fair statement, Bill?
The gas fund is, runs very close.
So...
Do you have, do you have a copy of the budget?
Runs, how much different does it run the last couple of years than what it ran the last ten years?
How much?
Does it have to do with the increase that we're in this lawsuit? Is that when we stopped seeing money coming in and just broke even or lost money?
That's had, that, that has had an impact.
Yes.
And that was a big part of it, too.
But I can go get, I got a stack of, of budgets in my office. I can go grab ones from seventeen and eighteen and show you what the projected cash, cash increase in the gas fund is, and it's, it's nominal.
One of the reasons we buy gas ahead of time, you know, is to get the, take advantage of the lower rates, so we can, of the lower cost of the gas, so that we can then turn that over to our customers. And I agree with what Mr. Washington is saying, you know, we, people on fixed incomes, you know, just barely squeaking by. I can, I emphasize with that, and that's why we've always tried to keep the rates low, but we do, we have to be responsible enough that, make sure that we have our reserves in case we have another emergency.
That's right.
That's my concern.
And I'll, I'll ask a question, if, if, uh, if you would feel better about, uh, Mr. Stone, about a lower rate increase, or, or, would any rate increase be okay? I'm just, I was just curious.
It's being presented, the rate increase is being presented as the funding source to replenish the reserves. Based on that reason, I don't believe that that's responsible. I believe that we have an aggressive strategy to replenish the reserves that is unnecessary. If, if someone showed me that we were, that we were six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars every year below our spending, and we are costing the city that much because we're not charging enough to cover our yearly expenses, then okay, show me that. But we took a twelve-cent increase a year and a half ago to break even because of those, because those rates went up. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. If someone can show me that our current rates are not paying the bills, then yes, I'm happy to, to review that. I'm happy to approve it. Go for it.
You don't think it's irresponsible to not have that extra money in case of another emergency?
Because we currently have the funds in our bank today, that if next February, every wellhead in Oklahoma and Texas frees again, and the entire Midwest has no gas, then sure, we've got that money already in the bank. We don't need to have that money.
Replacing it. You know, we're not replacing, if we had to use it again, if we had to use the loan.
But it's only costing us six-hundred thousand dollars each year.
Right, but we're not replacing the money. And we're having to give it back each year.
But what I'm saying is, I don't believe we need to replace that six-hundred thousand dollars every year within that year, if we wanna replace three-hundred thousand of it.
So you say a five-cent increase instead of a ten and only replace half of it?
Possible. You know, I'd guess, I would entertain looking at what happens next year. If in February of next year, the wellheads freeze, and we have to spend the money that we borrowed free of charge, then we've got our, then we can raise rates and... then we've got our, then we can raise rates in April, and we can raise rates in August, and we can do it again. If this once-in-a-lifetime thing happens every year, then sure, we need to have the money. But just to say, we've got $5 million in the bank, and we want to keep $5 million in the bank, and so we're going to raise rates, and we're going to do this, and we're going to cut 400,000 out of the budget, and, and we're not going to do this improvement, and we're not going to do that improvement because I'm scared and I want $5 million in the bank? That's the piece I don't agree with.
I, I think Kathy would come up if you would.
And, and I.
While she's coming up, Mr.
And we don't have to, you know, rehash everything that I missed in the other meeting. I'd be happy to have a conversation another time. We don't have to take up the time.
I just thought I would draw everybody's attention to the fact. I was somewhat curious because I kept hearing conversations about, well, it took us 10 years to build up this cash reserve, et cetera. I went back and checked our general ledger to 2005, and what's in that claim on cash account has not varied by more than $100,000. Stayed right at the same, year after year after year. So that is indicative of how close gas runs.
Oh, I see.
You see what I'm saying? There's never been a great big gain or loss. Now, 20 is unusual because of some of the transfers out of that account. But, yeah, they're that close.
And aren't those going to continue as we pay for the rec center, or aren't those going to continue, or are we done with that?
No, that was a one-time deal.
It's a one-time thing. I mean, that, but that depleted our resources, our reserves as well. And I'm looking at this year's budget, that's in your financial statement. You gave us this, and it's showing we're at about a $400,000, or 345, 675, if you want to look at the right number, if I look at the right number, a profit this year on gas. That's the budgeted number.
Oh, budget, but isn't the year-to-date awesome?
The year-to-date, we've lost 2,000, 2,273, 233. And the heating season is over.
Yeah, because we won't, we won't have much.
We won't see much in October, November, December.
I mean, we're seeing an uptick in December, but not, till we get to January and February.
Right.
But I just thought I would.
So when? When did we grow that reserve? If, if you're telling me that reserve was, has been at $5 million since 2005, I'm going off the information that was shared during a council meeting in March, that it took 10 years to build it.
Councilman Stone, I'm just giving you the numbers.
I don't know where that 10 years came from.
Yeah, I, I don't.
It was set in March. That's what we've all been working on.
It was set in March, but I don't remember who said it, or if, if it was a cumulative large number.
I could not go back past 2005.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Going back to you, you talked about the budget. Go to, go to the gas fund.
Uh huh, I'm looking at.
Have you seen the, the bottom number, the bottom number after, underneath adjusted net?
Yeah, it's 12,000, the budget.
That's what we're thinking in a perfect world.
Yeah.
Prior to, that was done prior to February.
Sure.
That the gas fund would end up $12,000 to the good.
Right.
But that takes, that takes in any capital that we wanted to do, and the facility loan payment, and then a loan payment from wa, they're going to get, water's still paying, back some money to the gas, $50,000. So at the end of, at the bottom line end of the deal.
Okay, and Daryl's found enough that's going to equal?
About 300,000.
300,000.
He cut all, cut 90% of his capital.
For one year only, though.
So that, so that 422,500, we've cut 90% of it, is what you're saying-ish.
I'm going to guess he's got $422,000 budgeted.
Yeah.
Most of the, most of the cuts came out of capital?
And, I mean, part of the money that's coming back to us is depreciation, and that's kind of.
Well, depreciation in our enterprise funds is a, it's a screwy thing. I wish the auditors were still here. I've had that question. See, we, we're, by law, we have to budget it as an expense.
Right.
But we don't do anything with it.
Right. We're talking about depreciation.
Depreciation.
The 215,000 depreciation.
So to get us to where I think of it as cash flow.
Yeah.
If you look in, in the adjustments, we're adding depreciation back in as a positive.
Right.
Bringing it back into the equation.
Right.
As a positive. So it's, you're going to, you're going to see it as an expense in the expenses, and you're going to see it coming back into, into the adjustments as an adder.
Yeah. It's a wash.
Depreciation is a wash.
Yeah. What'd you? Right. But, and, and I don't remember for certain, and I looked at the notes from that meeting, but I didn't see it. But I was thinking that the, the U-Board had actually recommended higher rates than, than nickel. And that's something we came up with in our discussions with dealing with the, cutting the capital and all that.
The, the U-Board did not, I'm on the U-Board.
Right.
It did not recommend any specific numbers.
Okay.
Their first recommendation was to restore the fund within a year, essentially immediately, which you can't do.
Right.
They finally settled on three years. That was their recommendation. But they gave no specifics, no recommendations, no suggestions on how to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have the ordinance coming up. We, everybody will get a vote. We'll get to talk about it some more if we want to.
No, this is it.
This is it?
This is it.
I thought we were.
It's a motion, because the ordinance.
The ordinance was already passed to establish a threshold.
Okay.
So this would just be, this is still well under that threshold, but that's why it does require a separate motion.
Gotcha. My bad.
I don't recall the 5, 0.50 on that in our last meeting, when we had that discussion. I don't remember coming up with a figure. I knew we talked about it. But I don't remember coming up with a figure of what percent, what we was looking for, so.
Yeah, it was in the notes that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I know we discussed it.
And it was, and it was like, this is a proposal, and that Bill and Kathy were going to tweak it some better and come back to us, which is, this is, to the come-back-to-us part, I think.
Yes, right.
Carry on, I'll shut up.
None of us like it, but I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm speaking for myself. I don't like it, but I don't know what else to do. I shouldn't speak for everyone.
Yeah, it's all bad. There's nothing good about it.
That's the world we live in, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be, though.
Well, and.
I mean, I think that at least we have something in the future that we're looking towards. If we do win this lawsuit, we're going to be able to potentially drop our rates again.
Well, that's on the 12 cents that we did a year and a half ago.
But there's also.
So this is an additional dime on top of that.
So it's still going to be a decrease, though, from where it is now.
Yeah, but that was the promise we made everybody a year and a half ago, too.
So as somebody paying for gas, would you rather not see it go down at all? Then, you know, if we had to break even, if we lose money now?
They don't, these two things don't play together.
But what I'm saying is, if we don't do anything right now, then do we decrease the amount that we're charging people still and we lose money? Do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm saying?
Specifically in the box of the 12-cent increase that we did in March of 2019? Yes, because that's what we promised the gas customers of this city.
So if we don't do this, and we reduce it 12 cents, then we're losing money. We're not replenishing it at all, and can we pay back the loans? So if we do decrease it by 12 cents.
We can pay back the loans with the money that's in the bank.
But we're, but we could also not be increasing our funds by anything at all.
I agree.
We pay that loan back, we, our reserves go away.
Exactly.
That's right, and then we don't have anything. And then, and then what if we're a town then, two years from now, and we have nothing in reserves? And this happens again, and we have half the amount of money left? Or, what is it, five years, two-thirds of the money left, but it's more? You know, it's the same amount, and then we have to charge our citizens at that time three times the amount that they're paying instead of doing a 5-cent increase now? You know, that's what I think is, are, is it going to be detrimental to our citizens if we do have an emergency again, even if it's three years from now, and we haven't replenished our funding at all? We don't have the loan left to pay, and then we have to charge our citizens three times as much as if we would have just done the 5 cents now, or 10 cents now, and have a little bit built back up? And then we don't have to charge it out to them at three times the amount?
All right, 15 cents or something.
Well, for a, for an average.
Daryl, I've been on several phone calls. There are some, City of Fulton, we have a fixed rate. Many towns in IMGA have a base rate to cover the operational costs. But then they also have a commodity charge, and their commodity charge per month varies to the customer based on the actual price of the natural gas. I don't know how many towns have worked, they were billing out the whole lick on one bill.
I think Herman did, didn't they?
I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything.
Which is also completely irresponsible to the gas customer.
Definitely.
I'm just saying, that's what they.
I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold my nose and say this is better than what some town down the road did.
Okay, well.
That's what they had to do.
And again, to add to the information that Kathy shared with us, evidently we had $5 million sitting in the gas reserve in 2005. And that reserve has floated for the past 16 years within $100,000, give or take.
But we don't have.
So there's 16 years, so who knows when we grew this reserve? It's great that we had it. You know, unlike, I believe Moberly was the one that that Thursday, Friday afternoon had to go to the bank and borrow $2 million to cover the expense for the weekend. It's great we didn't have to do that. But when we're talking about a reserve fund that took however long to build, and it has just simply maintained for the past 16 years, to come back and say, we want to replenish this money in three to five years? That's what I'm saying is irresponsible. If this 5 cents and the 5 cents in April is to replenish the reserve that took 20 years to build and maintain, that we want to build it back in three to five years on, on the backs of the gas customers? That's what I say is wrong. If someone's going to say that the operations, I'm going to repeat myself. If the operations of the gas fund are not funding the gas service that we provide the citizens, and we need to do another gas hike to meet that, I'm all for seeing those numbers and supporting that. But if the only reason why we're doing this gas hike is to make $3 million in the next five years, when it took 20 to 25 years to get us there, I think that's irresponsible.
And you don't have that information, that it took us 20 to 25 years to get that 5 million?
We just know.
Just to be fair.
We don't know.
I don't, we don't know how long it took.
You just said it, but you don't know it.
We knew we had it for the past 16 years.
Right.
So however long it took before that.
And, and just to be on the other side of this, if we don't do it, we're irresponsible.
I agree.
So.
I agree.
I understand. I don't want to raise rates, but we need a reserve.
And we have a 1.8 million dollar reserve.
Which isn't going to cover squat.
It would cover anything other than this once-in-a-lifetime rate hike that we had in February.
That doesn't cover our monthly expenses.
We have.
We don't know what's going to happen to the city, to the gas system, that is not expected. I mean, we could have the pipeline coming from Hatton get ripped up, like it did years ago. And who knows how long and how much that would cost to replace. There, there are too many unknown scenarios to say, oh no, we're not going to operate with a very big reserve in this, in, you know, if, if something happens, the citizens are going to pay for it. And they're going to pay a lot for it.
I feel like that this is just a tiny little poke. It's just a tiny little increase. Whereas if we did have an emergency and we didn't have the funds, it would be like a stab.
Good way to put it. You're right.
I mean, this is just a little poke that goes over time, just a little tiny trickle. Whereas if something happened and we had to charge our citizens, could it, could people afford it even? Are we stabbing them?
Like Councilman Washington said, you know, the people that are on low incomes.
Oh, of course.
I know of cities where gas bills were over $1,000 because of this event. We can't do that here.
We don't want to do that either.
I don't either.
On an average household.
Then what? You know, we can't fund those people either because we don't have the money.
During a.
What's a monthly household user use, just a typical user?
During a.
Family of four.
During a heating season month, probably 200, 200 units.
So 200 units on the worst, like the typical bad cold month? We'd take that point, that 5-cent multiplier times 200 is $10.
So it'd be $10, $10 to first hit, and then it would be $20 to second.
The estimates here at the bottom of the sheet says 10 to, 10 to 12, or 20 to 24 on the two times.
But that's only during that three or four month heating season as well.
Right.
That's not 12 months a year.
I'm just trying to put it in perspective.
Right. I mean, there's people that use gas all year round because they have a, their gas-water heaters or something like that. But there's not, those aren't huge users, I don't think.
The, the, I think the problem we have is there is no good answer.
Yeah.
If we do nothing, that's not good. If we raise rates, that's not good. But which is the least, not good?
Yeah.
That's lousy English, but, you know, so we have to make that decision.
I speak that language a lot, Val.
The lesser of two evils. I understand.
What's, what's the least painful thing to do?
Exactly, what's the least painful?
So we have a, a suggestion. We can make a motion if someone chooses to or not. Let's, let's just go that route, right? We, we'd need a motion to raise the rates.
Or, or, I didn't quite catch everything you said.
Well, in order to move the meeting along, I had to stop. We do need a motion if we're going to do something. If not, we can just move on.
Someone needs to make a motion for what's written in number C under new business in order to move it along.
I'll make the motion that we raise gas prices by 5 cents a unit this fall, as written here. And again, next spring. Yeah, I'll cover the reserves and the gas fund.
August and April.
Yeah, August and April.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any questions or last comments?
Further discussion.
I do have one question real quick. At one point, there was talk about taking that 5 million and like having it set there to draw interest?
Yes.
Are we still doing that?
It will.
So then have we calculated that into how much that will actually do?
I'm going to be honest with you, no, because it's, interest rates are so insignificant right now.
Almost nothing.
Yeah.
Well, we get a quarter of a percent, maybe?
Yeah, it would be almost nothing. Yeah, but I like the way you're thinking.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor would say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No, no.
All right, and if you're no, could you please raise your hand for me? But I have Stone, Combs, and Washington. Which means that we have four yeses and one ask.
Okay, so does that mean it passes? Do we not have to have more than that for a gas rate hike?
Typically, the mayor can break a tie. However, I would want to look at something really quickly, just to verify, because there are some caveats to that.
Okay.
If we can take just a quick moment?
Let's take five, because I got a.
I'll take a break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take five.
Why are you?[551.41]
Be thinking about this, we kind of have a plan of doing instead of our normal second and fourth Tuesdays, we would do, what's the game plan here?
Well, the the second council meeting in September is conflicts with the MML conference. So historically, we canceled that one. And then in that same item of discussion, we usually make a decision on the December meeting. Historically, we've gone on the third week. You know, instead of the second or fourth, we've gone on the third to kind of split the difference. This this year, the third week is on Tuesday with Christmas on the following Saturday. So I don't know if you want to have a council meeting on Christmas week, or if you want to move it back to just to the normal second Tuesday and cancel the second meeting.
And and the first thought was to not mess with Christmas week, you know, that having a meeting that week might be disruptive for for a lot of people. That that was part of the thought. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, also at a much lesser impact, the council has also been invited to our regional meeting. It occurs in the month of July and it's also on our our council meeting night. I don't know if we want to consider a change of our council meeting night in July. To accommodate that invitation to the regional.
Yeah, that just came today, right?
Was that Eminvala?
Yes.
Yes.
It's it's our central region meeting that we kind of float around to where we've gone to.
Different towns, yeah.
We've gone to Centralia.
Where's this one at?
In Vandelia.
Vandelia?
It's a Vandelia.
Yeah, which is not very far.
It is on July the twenty seventh, which is our fourth meet, our fourth week, second meeting of the month of July.
Right.
Now granted, that meeting is is much less of a city hit than our than our statewide conference in the week of Christmas, but I did want to bring that up since we're talking.
Actually, that one I could go to any other night that week. So can we can we do this one at a time, or?
Yeah, you can make separate motions.
Okay, I was going to suggest that we my I make the motion, we we do not hold the second meeting in September. We held it on the first Tues, we have one meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. And in December, we stick with the second Tuesday of the month on December fourteenth.
I like that, too.
I second that motion.
I do, too.
All right, so just to clarify, we are going to cancel the second meeting of September and go with the second week of December, which is December fourteenth.
Correct.
Are you correct?
That's my motion.
September fourteenth.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on that?
Cancel the twenty eighth.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Okay, and then do we want to make the other?
Anyone want to bring yours up?
Do we want to because we do we want to consider the regional meeting? Or do we want to send our regards to the one we have a scheduled meeting to?
That's not a bad idea to send our regards, but get I personally don't feel that I would make that meeting anyways. I don't, we generally don't.
I didn't see that email. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I have it in front of me if you want.
We have a central region group of municipalities and councils and aldermen that meet. And it it rotates every quarter. We meet once a quarter, each different city, each different municipality hosted. So since, you know, last or we didn't do anything last year, but the year before, I know Centralia posted it or hosted it. We've gone to Boomville, we've gone to Jefferson City.
Mexico.
We've hosted it.
We've gone to Mexico.
And so we're we're finally having another one for the first time since before COVID. And the city of Vandelia is hosting it.
How far away is Vandelia?
Oh.
It's half an hour on the other side.
About thirty minutes.
It's only an hour away. It's as close as other places we've gone.
It's not, it's it's closer than some I've been to.
Oh, yeah.
I've been to Sodalia.
We've talked, we've gone to Boomville, we've gone places before as a group. And and that invitation came today.
What time?
It's it's usually like six or six thirty.
It's at six P. M.
We do it in there, and then that city gets to present all the all the fun and good things that they're doing in their city. And we all take turns once a quarter. And that just came today. So it's the first time in a year and a half that we've met as a central region for MML.
The presentation is going to be on the twenty twenty one legislative session. So by Mr. Sheets, Mr. Richard Sheets, and he's the like the MML liaison with with, well, he's also the interim executive director, but I remember him as always being the one that went to the legislator and talked, so.
And Mike, you've served as what's what's the?
I served as an officer, yes.
You did not.
Through the president, actually, because it's kind of a progressive thing when you get in there.
Just kind of look way out.
But anyway.
So that would be July, what, July?
July twenty seventh at six P. M.
In Vandelia.
So that week. If we if we kept the meeting and moved the moved the night, I don't know.
Who else considering going? Maybe you think about that. Is it who wants to go?
Is anybody going to go to this?
Who wants to go?
I mean, right now, we're all scheduled to be here that night.
Of course.
But if we moved it, where do we go?
Right, exactly.
I don't think I would go. I would just.
I I probably I probably wouldn't go myself either. But I sure don't mind accommodating folks to do this another night.
I'm fine with also sending our regards, you know. Love to attend, but sorry, we can't because we already have a council meeting.
I I think that'd be appropriate. We can do that. I'll I'll personally take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we did get that kind of resolved then. We'll move on to council concerns. I'll start to my left, Councilman West.
The only thing, I'm glad you came to me because I was afraid somebody else would get to it first. Last week, I think we had a fire at Moser's that our fire department went and addressed and kudos to them. There even Moser's had you out on the sign, so great work, guys, and, you know, pass our my thanks on it. For job well done.
It was intentionally set so the police department got to be involved in that also.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of all that, but I heard that rumor, but it, you know, it's great that our firefighters were able to deal with it. And I was in the store on Sunday. I didn't even couldn't even tell it.
Did you, the one that odor, I've got.
No, I didn't detect anything. Didn't even think about it until afterwards. I'm like, hmm, I didn't notice anything, so.
I first caught wind of what happened, and I thought the worst, you know, Moser's could go up.
Yeah.
But thank goodness.
I actually tried to go to Moser's then with a whole bunch of fire trucks and an ambulance and a police car. Maybe it wasn't the best time to go.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, no, I don't.
Councilwoman recluse?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Stone? Councilman, uh, Combs?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Washington?
No.
And Councilwoman Nelson?
Nothing for me.
Wow, all right, very good. Thank you all. We'll move on to resolutions. Tonight, we have resolution thirty four twelve first, if you would, Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number three four one two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, authorizing consumer fireworks to be discharged in all city parks for a specific period of time on July fourth, twenty twenty one. I make a motion to adopt resolution number three four one two at the council meeting tonight.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Basically, we kind of have a plan that hopefully will work. We did meet with with some folks from our community that recognize the problem that we've had to cover with the fireworks wars and have come up with a game plan along with our council folks that that attended that meeting with them. We appreciate Lauren and Bob helping with that. But we we do have kind of a a proposal that that we've worked on that that's agreeable to to the the fireworks war people, we think. And the leaders of 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 the community have really stepped up and and we we feel like that they've taken responsibility and and want to be responsible for for that area that night. And they're going to assist our police and for police officers with kind of enforcing, you know, the 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 rules, play by the rules, guys, if not, then leave. That's kind of the message that we were given. And I take my hat off to the efforts that were made on all parties. And and I'm probably missing something here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, also, I agree with you on that. It seems like it it appears that the people that were going to be be responsible for setting this up, they're looking to have bounce houses and stuff like that, making more of a family kind of outing. And and the firework wars, they're not going to be firework wars. We're not, we're not agreeing with that. They just want to have a family situation. It seems that and they're going to have security kind of people to to help out, to make sure that there won't be any fireworks shooting at people and things like that. So and if a violator is doing something like that, they're there, we got police there. They will enforce the law. They will enforce that. So they're there to, and the security people that we have, they said they will have their, we have on vests that will, officers can identify who's working and who's supporting. So they're going to be very visible. And we hoping that this will will work and would and make it as safe as possible. So I think it's it's a good start and good, we're working with them and we'll see if it works out.
Yep, yep. And and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Myers, you're on board with this plan that, you know, we're going to try this. Hopefully, it's going to have a big improvement.
Most certainly. I think it I think we discussed it. We had, I think, a very productive meeting. And I think certainly worth worth trying and hopefully it will be successful.
Yep, very good, excellent.
I'm also really, it it's it's really nice to see the members of our community that are willing to step up, that love the people in the town as much as we do. You know, I think that that's awesome, that we have this group of people that are willing to put themselves out there and willing to step up and help and enforce this and and keep it a a positive event.
Absolutely, and I I know it meant a lot that we were able to meet with them and talk about it. And let's see what we can do. I know Chief Myers has had numerous meetings with with folks about this. So to to at least have a game plan, I think, is a step in the right direction. Will it work completely? No, we know that, but I think it's, you know, best try. Let's let's see if it helps. Yes, Mike?
Well, I want to agree with what else has been said about, you know, kudos to those involved with getting together. And I'm assuming the, since it's right next to the fire station, we'll have firefighters on standby in case something gets out of hand, just like any other professional fire event we have, right? Fireworks event we have, right?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and hopefully we keep getting rain like we got.
See, I'm completely on board with with all of that, a lot of potential, a lot of effort has gone into it. But do we have any concerns with this saying in all city parks? Like, because that's opened up a whole other can of worms.
Yeah, absolutely. We we took that into.
It's trashed already as it is.
We we did take that into consideration, Alan, and, yeah, it's just, it would be hard to say it's okay at one park and not another. It would be not fair.
Sure.
And even though we can't probably police it as much as we'd love to, you know, we do have a lot of extra officers on that are going to be on force that night and present if we need them.
And and we we talked about that we didn't want to authorize it in one park.
Right.
And at the same time, then make criminals of people that are doing it in another park.
No, you can't.
So we're we're authorizing it at all parks.
Yes, and we'll see how it goes.
And Mr. Mayor, I just encourage that everyone in any of the parks also assists with the self policing. You know, we, you know, everybody should help everywhere. You know, this is something that we're going to try and and see if it, see if it allows everybody to have a nice, safe, good time in all the parks on the Fourth of July. But it's going to take the self policing of of everybody that's present.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. So how would enter, do we have, yeah, we get a motion? All right. Any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty, thank you very much. We'll move on to resolution thirty four thirteen, Councilman West, if you would.
Yes, sir. Resolution number thirty four thirteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Great River Associates Incorporated for engineering services related to the Second Street Bridge Accelerated Innovation Deployment Project. I move for resolution, adoption of resolution number thirty four thirteen at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. This is to sign our contract with our contractor for the for the bridge on Second Street. Anything you'd like to clarify or add?
Because it's because there's federal fund, Kyle wants to help me out too, maybe, but because there's federal funds involved, there's a requirement on a engineering selection process. We advertised and we took proposals from various engineering firms. We received five proposals. We put a group of city staff together independently, ranked them and judged them. From that ranking, we interviewed the top two. And based on the interview that we conducted, Kyle was then directed to negotiate with Great River to come up with a contract and a price. Because when you're negotiating for a professional service like that, you don't talk about price. You talk about qualifications. So Great River was, made an offer based on their qualifications and their and their presentation. And Kyle was able to negotiate at two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars, which which in all honesty is about ten thousand dollars less than we were expecting.
As part of their proposal, did they have to give a timeframe? I know part of this project was accelerated or, you know, a speedy project. Did they have to stipulate what the days were that the bridge would be out for?
There's there, there's kind of too many variables for them to pinpoint, you know, the amount of days. Being an innovative grant, you know, there's there's going to be a few alternatives that they that they present, not only not only to us, but MoDOT and Federal Highway. And Federal Highway has to approve and put their put their rubber stamp on that, yes, it it does meet the aid grant technicalities, so.
One thing that was discussed at the interview, maybe shouldn't even throw this out. There's going to be two big options. Do you want to spend a lot and get it done really quick? Or do you still just want to spend a lot and have it take longer? You know, but if we if we give the contractor more days, it it'll be cheaper. But if we want it done in the.
One one example would be that they can do it half at a time, keep one one half open, do the other half. And it's open longer, okay, it's open more, if if you will. Or shut it down, rebuild the whole thing, and it's actually reopen in full capacity quicker. You know, so there's there's a little give and take there, so.
And we will discuss all of those options with the engineers. And I'm guessing we'll bring those options back to the city council and kind of give you final say on, yeah, let's let's blow it up and have them get it done in a few weeks? Or let's try and keep.
You guys are the bad guy.
Or do we or do we want to close one lane down and have it have construction going on for a couple of months, three months?
But the detours wouldn't be that far, would they, with this?
Right, I mean, the the detour, the detours, you know, really that you got to think about mainly, local traffic, local light traffic, like, you know, our cars.
Right.
There's there's a lot of options.
Yeah.
You know, a big, big tractor trailer, for instance, that's kind of what you got to think about.
Yeah, that's a good point. Highway O right now is closed because they're resurfacing. I don't know what they're doing, one of the bridges.
There's a bridge over the Avos.
Yeah, and it's, it's quite a distance to get to get around that issue, you know, so.
Here, you're talking safe for a big tractor trailer, you know, that if they were coming, say, from the nuclear plant or something.
Right.
They could go up Wood Street and to Z and and find their way to fifty four or whichever way that they're going.
But they can also be directed away from it other ways, too, to get to.
For folks that aren't from this area, a lot of people use Google Maps. Will will Google Maps be changed for that amount of time or that timeframe?
I'm going to say no.
Can it be?
I mean, I know that we've, just with the the sanitary sewer work that we're getting ready to do down here on Second Street or Rado, we've had MoDOT put that on their their traveler's map, so it registers there. And I don't know, you know, if Google will pick that up. A lot of times what Google will do is they'll, you know, they're they're kind of big brother in your phone a little bit, you know, when when traffic is supposed to be going, say, fifty miles an hour, and it slows down to thirty miles per hour, they can sense that via via cell phones and things like that. And and a lot of times that alerts Google Maps and and apps like that. But in this instance.
Don't tell me what I don't want to know, Kyle. You're telling me.
In this instance, in this instance, you know, it's already an area where you're going pretty slow anyway, so I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Will will any of the options or any of the projects impact the the walking trail that goes underneath Second Street?
Yes, this bridge will definitely, I mean, it, this, the bridge will definitely impact the walking trail. That section would be shut down for a short period of time while it's being reconstructed, for sure. Because it goes right underneath that bridge.
And are you, are we assuming that whichever option, whether they they only shut down half or they shut down the whole bridge, that that sewer construction and all of that that's underneath that bridge, are we going to be shutting down the walking trail for the entire duration or?
I would say there's a good chance for during the bridge, that during the bridge construction, that that walking trail will be shut down just just for safety concern. Yes.
Just as a comment, Mr. Mayor, we, there is no, there's not a sidewalking at all around that Second Street underpass of the of the creek trail. So there's there's not an easy misdirection or redirections of of people using the walking trail that are trying to get from, you know, Memorial Park to Seaman Field.
Right, I think we'll need to sign at the trailheads, I think we'll need to put a sign, letting people know that, hey, if you.
So we don't have an easy redirect for that.
Right. And what's what's our timeline, the earliest we're going to start construction on this?
I I think construction will probably be twenty twenty three, to be honest with you.
So, you know, we've got some time to think about some of those. I'm all for that.
Give me the money, just tell them.
They put, they spent eleven million for the Jeff City Bridge to for pedestrians, I think, didn't they? Just added on that little eleven million.
How much?
I think it was eleven million.
To put on that, wow.
Wow. All righty, where are we at?
We have a motion in a second on the floor to approve resolution thirty four thirteen.
Thank you, somebody's paying attention. All right, any other discussion about this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Thank you. All righty, first reads. Ordinance says we have Bill sixteen nineteen, if you would, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Bill number sixteen nineteen, an ordinance amending chapter ninety four, solid waste, article four, storage, collections, and disposal, Fulton City Code, by repealing certain sections of Division Three, services charges, and enacting new sections in layer thereof. I make a motion to Bill number sixteen nineteen. Please bill for the for the second reading at the next scheduled meeting, sorry.
That's okay, I have a motion in a second. This is regarding the kind of the revamped, updated tipping fees and whatnot for our garbage in the city here. Is there anybody that still has concern or questions, discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, we'll hear that for a second read next meeting. Next up, we have Bill sixteen twenty, if you would, Councilman Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very reluctantly, someone's playing a horrible joke on me tonight because this is the one part of our audit that I completely dislike. Is that to go back and redo a budget from a year automatically or stop?
I'm I'm with you on that.
I I have to vote on this in three different budgets in different boards that I'm on. And this is the one that I I just do not like, but I will gladly read the ordinance, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen twenty, an ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty is outlined by Article Eight, Financial Procedures, Section eight point eight, amendments after adoption, paragraph C, transfer of appropriations, Fulton City charter, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance Bill number sixteen twenty for second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
I don't know, Kathy, if 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 anybody has any questions, she can come to the podium, and I'll kind of prep them while you're coming up. Uh, this is, we only have to amend the budget for line for funds that we overexpend. Now, no, careful, I say that, that we spent more than we budgeted. It does not mean that there may not have been offsetting revenues to cover that over expenditure. So the funds may have still ended up in the in the black. It for the some funds that if you generate more revenue, when it comes to the budget, they don't really care about how much money you bring in, it's only how much money goes out. So what are the questions?
I had a hand down here, I thought.
Well, I was gonna, I'm gonna kind of echo what Councilman Stone said. I've never, I've never cared for doing this because I just think it's odd, but.
I will tell you, Mr. West, that I could not, I could not prepare the budget adjustments at least until April or May because due to governmental accounting rules, at the end of March, we're still expensing things back to December.
Sure.
So I don't know what the annual expenses.
Right, I understand that, but it just doesn't make sense because you pass a budget, you do it, and if you go over, I guess I'm just going to other entities, and that's fine. I have a question, what if we would say no?
That's a good question.
And I'm not going to do, and I'm not going to do that, but I'm just asking the question.
That's up to you. That's your shot to call.
The the answer I got one time is then you get to answer to the auditors.
Yes, because I can't answer for you.
That's what I got told one time. You want to say no, no problem, you go talk to the auditor.
It just seems strange. It's always seemed strange to me. I won't do what I just said, but I just kind of wonder, okay, what if, you know?
Some things in life are strange.
Yeah, okay, I'm finished.
Any other discussion, questions? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Kathy. Okay, second readings, we have Bill sixteen eighteen, if you would, Councilman Simmons.
Yes, sir. Bill number sixteen eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to declare a tract of land located at two oh nine West Ninth Street in Fulton, Missouri, to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance Bill number sixteen eighteen to third reading tonight and final reading tonight.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. We did hear this last meeting. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? If you would again?
Bill number sixteen eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to declare a tract of land located at two oh nine West Ninth Street in Fulton, Missouri, to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance Bill number sixteen eighteen to final approval tonight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? And oppose, no? Okay, you've all heard the bill read three times. If you would, at this time, Madam Clerk, take final roll call for final votes.
All right, Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson? Yes. Ms. Reclu? Yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, affirmative, and one absent.
All righty, we'll move on to our third readings tonight. Councilman Washington, if you would, present Bill sixteen fifteen.
Bill, Bill number sixteen fifteen, ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance a tract of land located at eleven forty Highway fifty-four in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we move for final passage on tonight's council meeting.
Second. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Again, we, we've heard this read a couple of times. Is there any other discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And oppose, no? And we've all heard the bill read three times. If you would, at this time, Madam Clerk, take final roll call.
All right, Ms. Nelson? Yes. Ms. Reclu? Yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Combs? Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
That's okay, Bob. All right, we do have a couple, or one announcement, I've got another one, too. The next council meeting will be held Tuesday, July thirteenth, at twenty twenty-one. A work session will commence at six thirty with regular session to follow at seven. And we do have our mayor's golf tournament scheduled. And I will have a flyer out on Facebook tomorrow, I promise, to be able to get signed up for that. But just get ahold of Parks and Rec. I believe the date is gonna be August twentieth. We need twenty-five excellent, low-scoring teams.
I got a, I got a flyer in the mail, and it said the thirteenth.
The thirteen, is it thirteenth? Okay, thank you.
Thirteen.
Yeah, I, we got a, we got one from Tanglewood that said the thirteenth.
I was only seven days off, Lloyd.
Well, you would have had people a week, a week late.
Yeah, thank you, yep. I need a keeper, I swear. So, yeah, the thirteenth. But any, any other announcements?
I've got one.
Yes.
Yes, I have a, there's gonna be a five K run for Children's Miracle Network, if anyone's interested in it. The date's on the, July the tenth, and it will just be, they've got, they're gonna do just the trail. They're not gonna do the street or anything like that. If you're interested, I have brochures on it.
Excellent, all right.
Encourage everybody to come out for the street fair this weekend.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
I like your style.
I think I've seen the carnival going by already.
I know.
But the, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think there's a blood drive, the fire and police are sponsoring.
I saw that on a flyer.
June when, twenty-third? June thirtieth? Thirtieth, so, and I'm, there's gonna be another one at St. Peter's on July the ninth, it's a Friday, from noon to six, so.
Is that blood drive?
Another blood drive. If you can't make one, you know, other opportunities, that need is still out there.
Yep, it sure is. Thank you very much. All righty, I do not have a need for executive session. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, let's go.
Yo.
Yes.